The interruption to the traffic during the construction. And from everything I've heard, it sounds like the cast in place makes the most sense from both cost and the least disruption to the trees. My concern is if we're going to want a bike lane over that culvert rather than to have an open culvert, that it will be, once we've spent six months doing this, to have an open culvert and then later to decide to cover it, it's going to be more costly, we know that, we might be able to bite that cost bullet. But the residents are going to be really upset about having to come for six months while there's construction down that road. The last thing they're going to want to do is spend another few months to cover it. So I think that it's really important for the council to carefully assess if we want a bike or pedestrian lane, and if we think we will want it, we should bite the bullet, pay them more money, and cover the thing now so there's one period of disruption along that road, because I think that's going to be very upsetting to people.
Good point.
I agree with that, too.
We can go further on. There are fencing and barriers that we were talking about, you know, installing, that's part of this report.
Yeah, we went over it last time.
Right, that we didn't go over.
Can we talk about the options? Are we going to talk anymore about the options or not?
Sure.
Yes.
All right, so my only comment, I'm 100% with Rick. I think that eventually we're going to need to do something on that road. That is one of the most dangerous roads to walk on and definitely to bike down, okay? And you can't, okay? I've done it and it's very scary.
You can't.
Well, you can do it, but you take your land.
On a Sunday morning even, when there's not traffic, you can't.
Right, that time that Malcolm took that picture.
Yeah, I know.
But I do think that we need to bite the bullet. But before we bite the bullet, first off, you know, I'm a little disappointed that we hadn't done, we don't know the volume, you know, when we're doing the study and we're paying for a study, we should have actually looked at how much, well, you know, what the volume was that we were going to go feed into, okay? So that worked, maybe that's in the detailed design, but I would have thought that that would have been an easy thing to do some analysis on, because it does affect what, you know, the plans that we paid for. Secondly, I brought up last time, and I'll bring up again, that water doesn't start in Atherton. The water starts in Portella Valley and Woodside, and it comes in as multi-jurisdictional, as Bill said. And so it shouldn't be all of our problem. So, you know, you can't dam people upstream, obviously, but, you know, flooding and things like that are a regional issue, they're not just ours. And so asking Atherton to pay for a $3 million improvement, that is going to do two things, channel somebody, some of our water and some of their water, as well as keep the road up so all these people that are traveling through Atherton, not mostly residents, but most of these people that are coming through on the rush hour are not, they're passing through Atherton, or coming through Atherton to go to Redwood City or something like that. So again, if that road impacts, if there's some significant impact to that road, it's not just going to be our problem, it's also their problem and the businesses that they're getting revenue from. So, you know, I implore the staff again to go out and really take, you know, don't just say, hey, we want to work with you and we're going to pay for it. It's some of their problem, and I understand that Redwood City for the last couple of years has talked about us helping them with getting out into the bay. All right, I mean, again, it's everybody's issue. So Woodside, Portella Valley, they're not immune from this. In fact, we've spent millions of dollars fixing the stuff on Walsh Road, all right, and it's all their water. The water didn't start, that's the edge of Atherton, so suddenly there wasn't, there's not a spring there. The water's coming down from the horse farms, and they keep paving and paving to build more and more, you know, cement areas for their horses, and that horse farm is generating a lot, plus also, a lot of pollution is coming down into that creek because of the runoff. And so really, I think, really, we're missing a point here, and that we need to focus on that. But then the other point I was trying to make is, again, as Rick said, let's do it right.
Bill, I'm in complete agreement with you. But in dealing with Woodside, Portella Valley, and those upstream communities, somehow we need to find a bigger stick. Because in the past, when we've tried, and we've tried many times to deal with them for years, they've basically said, thank you, but we're not interested, and we're not going to pay. Now, somehow, either regionally or by some other method, we've got to find a bigger stick so that we can convince them that they have to make part of this payment. I don't know what that stick is, but Bill, you may, you may have a way of finding some regional body that's going to insist that they pay their fair share.
There are ways. SEQA being the first one that springs to mind. Water law is interesting. If they do allow improvements, as Bill said, you know, more concrete, more runoff, that's not a given that it's okay to do that. And there are, that is an environmental impact right up front. And if you were to take the position that any hardscape at all in those communities, they have to comply with SEQA, and if they thumb their nose at you, you've got to tell me upfront that it's okay, we're going to take the litigation route. Because that's what it's going to come down to, because in the end, just like us and Redwood City, nobody wants to hand another jurisdiction a bucket of money to solve their problem, even if we're contributing to it. And because of that, you know, I can tell you right now, if I were their city attorney acting, well, this is a problem, but, you know, there's also passed historically that the water, it's always flowed down the channel, and you have a right to continue to do that. But there is the issue of when you increase the amount that's going down, it's not a zero-sum game. As you're discovering and talking about, what happens when all this hits Menlo Park's pipes? Well, now we have a problem, because we can do everything we want to increase our capacity to flow down to that point, but if you don't do something there, it doesn't matter how much water we convey, it's going to keep going, it's just going to come up to the surface and go across the top.
How do we get started? How do we get started to force these communities to help us?
I think that it starts at the regional level with, either the, and George probably has some ideas too, but there are a lot of regions where they create special districts to look at and to fix these regional problems. And, you know, in doing so, I think that it's going to be at the highest level, it's going to be city council to city council, mayor to mayor, city manager to city manager.
How about you, more of the supervisors?
They'll probably have a small part in it, because most of this water's coming from, you know, I mean, there's going to be other participants, Caltrans and others, you know, they have a freeway that dumps water into this as well. There's no one answer other than, I think you're absolutely on the right track, you're going to have to start looking at the region. There are some other players that can be ugly, ugly in the sense of that they have the ability to come in and force other people to the table to participate, regional water quality control.
Would we create a special district?
You can. There's no one way to make this work, but I do think that it'll never work until you get, at the highest levels, people starting to talk and hard talk.
Who's the highest level?
Well, I'm looking at forums.
What?
I'm looking at the forums.
You know, council, so I think, you know, you're on the right track here. If I could just, you know, reaffirm what you've said about the horse park over the years, and we have a resident who has monitored that horse park and the water runoff for many, many years, and have watched the development of it, because it used to be just open space, and then they made it a paved road with parking and, you know, more stables, and that's kind of, so I think that we kind of, that seems to be one of the biggest culprits right there. Because you go up there, when it's pouring down rain, everything just flows down.
I haven't seen it.
Have you seen it? You've been up there?
I've been up there.
You've been up there? I've been up there, and it is, you know, awesome. I mean, and then it flows down, flows under 280, and then into our Walsh Road channel, and there it goes, in a big torrent.
We could certainly start with, you know, mayor, vice mayor meeting amongst those three jurisdictions and the managers as well to start that discussion.
I have to tell you that for years, Councilmember McKeeson took this kind of as a special project. She ripped her tail off trying to get them to do something, and she also tried to create a special district that would cover this. She obviously wasn't successful, but it seems to me if we could create a special water district, everybody would have to pay for it, not just us. Now, how do we get to the state of creating a special water district?
It requires them, the other participants, to agree that this is a way.
But they won't.
You talked about the carrot. There is a stick, and a stick is that you can, if you can take a hard line position, but be careful because you're paving the way for your neighbor on the other side to take a hard line against you, to say, okay, no more development until you comply, not another extra drop of water that comes in. I mean, with all due respect to Valerie, look, we don't know what climate change will do in terms of water. It could be better, it could be worse. I've been skiing under those conditions for years, it's up, it's down. But we do know that every time they put a new driveway in, even in a house, that conveys water that doesn't percolate into the ground anymore, and now goes out into the stormwater system. And that increment, if you can demonstrate that right now, it's already at the maximum level, any increment, any gallon of water that flows off is too many. And there are ways to stop it. There are lawyers that are experts in water law that come in, and they make a very good living off of these kinds of problems, good and bad. This is not, this is not new, and there's a lot of communities up and down Santa Barbara being famous.
How do we get started?
Okay, so let's not discuss the carrot.
Can I just interject a little bit? Just, I just came back from Sacramento, and this is a billion dollar question.
Yeah.
Is water runoff. So it's not something that is new to us or new to California, and it's going to be something that, as a state and as a city, we're going to have to deal with more. And the lawyers are going to be probably the winners in the game, they're going to try to decipher who upstream is going to have to pay for the downstream cost. But as far as this project's concerned, I do agree, yeah, we have some issues, and whatever rolls downhill, and we do need to have some kind of plan and more outreach, locally, nationally, and so on and so forth, to try to work on this, but that's a project that's going to take years. It's not going to be something that's going to occur overnight, and we obviously have a project that has a needs today, that we've got to kind of come up with a game plan to figure out how to work with it. I do not disagree that we do not, we should, actually, it doesn't sound responsible, that we are actually going to talk to our neighbors and talk about downstream flow and impacts of Menlo Park. Our neighbors upstream haven't really done that to us, but we're doing it, we're trying to be more responsible. But I do think that we have a project on the deck that we have to make some decisions on, and we have to, you know, inform staff with kind of a directional path, but not limiting that we still are interested in engaging our neighbors upstream to say, hey, what are you guys going to do for us, and keeping an eye on the litigation, which is ultimately how decisions are made anyways. So.
Good, okay. How about Larry and then Valerie?
This was kind of what I was getting at, I think, what Carrie was saying, that, you know, the longer it takes to get going, the more we're going to spend on maintenance of the existing system. So if we, you know, we have a couple of really good proposals, I think, for making the current configuration safer, and to, but it sounds to me like we're not facing as many environmental issues, we're not really changing capacity, we're just fixing what's there. Downstream, there are some other things we'd like to consider, but all of those are going to delay the project. In the meantime, we're maintaining this thing that's falling apart. So that's why my recommendation, and if you start and say, okay, let's look at covering this over now, and if some of the neighboring jurisdictions or even some of our own residents decide they don't like it because of environmental impacts or because of what it does, and they start asking SEQA questions and taking you to court over these issues, you can just slow the thing down indefinitely. That's my concern. So my argument was, we've got a couple of good plans for fixing what's there, but I'm supportive of making it better in the future.
Any other comments, Valerie?
So I would like to just reiterate that every project that any city council undertakes is not one that they're looking 10 years down the road. It's always the one that somebody's screaming, my property's going to get damaged, you've got to fix this, there's a repair that's needed. But that's not the right way to think about these problems. Atherton is a community that has more, excuse me, straws in the ground. People are taking more water out of the watershed in Atherton than in any other community. We have so many wells in this town, and on top of the fact that a lot of people rely on well water for one purpose or another, we have something like a 60% chance of the water system failing in California in the next 30 years. And that was a statistic that I heard five years ago. So now that's, in the next 25 years, Hetch Hetchy and Calwater might fail us, and that means we have Bear Gulch, and we have our wells. And in a 20 to 30 year span, if in that time we had made a policy of building not more concrete channels that take all this great rainwater and stick it in the bay, but of letting it absorb into the ground, we would be a community that would be in pretty good condition for dealing with a water shortage. And while it's not the most imminent problem, it is a problem that we are going to face, and we should be addressing it and setting a plan in place that doesn't simply continue what is already known to be a bad system for channeling water from where we want it, which is absorbed into our ground, to out into the bay.
That's a very good point.
I would just like to give you a good comment that I think that Atherton in general, and I think we're going to get better, but we actually, as a city through the building department, force any new homes that are being built to create some extremely big retention devices that.
Then let's use that technology itself.
And I think that that's a good positive way where we should be moving forward, thinking more positively, not throwing the water more out into the roadways, but try to contain it, reuse it, and circulate it.
So with the consultant, would that possibility of having a permeable bottom in this culvert instead of a hard, more of a permeable concrete kind of a system, rather than the hard concrete system, would that help the overflowing capacity? Is that something that's even allowed?
Well, I don't think it helps in the overflowing capacity, because overflowing capacity is an event.
An event.
And I think that would create a weakness in design, correct?
The permeable.
Yeah.
The permeable cement.
Cement is permeable by nature.
Right.
But they have that, they have that, they have that special cement that goes through, but you have to put oil on it all the time or some sort of.
So I think, I think we're really on a very positive idea here, brought up by Valerie, is to, you know, try to do more riparian, you know, system. And we have a perfect opportunity with the culvert of the channel that goes along the park to create that, that would slow the amount of water down. I think for this road situation, we have got to do something traditional, hard and fast, and that is going to be, you know, structurally sound to carry the traffic that's there. I don't think that we have the luxury of trying to redesign Marsh Road at this juncture. That would take a lot more time. We've been talking about repairing this channel wall for years. It has been, I know that we have been talking about repairing this channel wall for years, and so I think that it needs to, we need to do something. And then take the next step of maybe looking at the upstream, because I don't know any other area of the creek that we could do that with, make a more riparian overflow. Do you?
I don't.
I mean, Pensinol, along Isabella there? I don't think so.
I think along the park, you know, for that idea. I think that's a good idea, and we could, you know, we're going to have to redo.
Flush that out.
Yeah, we're going to have to redo the pathway anyway, it's the perfect time.
So can we talk about, from which option the council prefers to give direction?
I'll give you mine.
Okay.
Now I'm going away from the bike.
You don't want to.
The bike, that's no good.
I think that the colored box culvert is the way to go, because it covers, it does everything, and it does it once. Maybe it costs a little more, but it doesn't mean that we have to cover in the future. And it also gives us some advantages, which is that we can have white lanes and anything else.
On top of it. We'd have to size it appropriately.
I would agree with Jim in the sense that creating the cast culvert, I would also like to soften the look as much as possible by considering some natural tone of concrete versus traditional grays.
No, no, wait a minute, he's doing the box.
It's the box culvert.
But so you don't see that.
But you're going to still see a percentage of it on top, as well as that top area, because that's a curve, those are two curves, correct?
Yeah, but we can put dirt on top.
If you curb dirt on top.
Yeah, make a nice walk.
Well, whatever's visible, because I knew, I know that we also have deviations.
Do you think of the price that's here?
There are also some deviations of how much will be exposed, correct?
I think most, most of the work on this recommendation or the suggestion of looking for aesthetic treatments, I believe, was with the assumption of open channels. You know, we don't have a design for the box culvert to know whether you'd have, you know, whether they'd be open concrete, whether they'd be colored concrete, you could put wood chips over it, I mean, you know, you're going to have to, that's going to have to be determined by someone other than the structural engineer as to, you know, how you're going to use that top.
Right. I think, just in my opinion, is that, I would like to see an increased use of that area, either pedestrians, bikes, or whatever it is, so I think that would be a big consideration.
And if we do that once, the traffic situation is only affected once.
Yeah, right.
I'm not a fan of that, I have to tell you. I'm a fan of the option 2A, the cast-in-place concrete, because I think that it would be less invasive, because you can pour it and create your concrete walls. With the boxed, totally enclosed culvert, you have potential overflow problems or, you know, clogging problems with this. I think that you can create a wooden pathway, boardwalk, that has spaces in it as well as gaps for overflow on top of this, and it would just be a lot more aesthetic, and if it, if there was a clog or something, you know, you could, you know, take up your boardwalk and, you know, I think it would just be a lot better. I'm a fan of option 2A.
So an open culvert.
The open culvert, but design it so that it can receive a wooded boardwalk for a pedestrian bike path, a dedicated pedestrian bike path.
Or cover it as part of the same project, done at the same time.
Right.
Yes, right.
So we consider the top, so in essence, almost like the box culvert, but just a different design.
Exactly, right.
Well, but it's not exactly a box.
It's not a box.
So it's something you wouldn't, it wouldn't affect any animals that live there, but the sun would still get in there and stuff.
Right, that's, that's what I would root for. That's my vote.
So, do I get a vote?
Yes, I'm rooting for you.
Okay.
Are you the tie? Are you going to change your vote? You're thinking about it.
Well, I don't, my opinion is, I actually like the fact, I want it softened, so the key is, to me, is to soften the look.
Absolutely.
We're not really going to vote tonight, we're just talking.
We're talking about.
We're talking about theoretically what's going to happen down the future when we bring this back to vote, but I get what.
This is the direction I want to stand to vote in.
You're getting directions to that, so we can.
Option 2A.
You could look at, you could actually look at more than one, if you got it down to two, it would help us bring them back for.
Combining of potential.
Yeah, I'm about to give my opinion.
Okay, I'm relentless.
So I actually liked the box culvert from the standpoint of it solves the problem now, however, the idea that you brought up, Elizabeth, was actually, is quite an interesting idea. I'd like to see that explored. So it gives us a nice heavy boardwalk that can be a pedestrian area, it's covered up, but the water can percolate out.
Yeah.
All right? You know, it might be cheaper, and, you know, and we could leave that open just for pedestrians as well as bicycles, we could put a line down the center, but, you know, it'd have to be something that was well-maintained, and that there couldn't be any way for people to, you know, drop in or, you know, kid or whatever, maybe just like on the Golden Gate Bridge, right? You know, those things.
Right.
We don't want to have anything like that, where somebody can get down there and get trapped or whatever, so.
This seems to have to be, yeah.
We could bring a drawing back at your next meeting.
Right, but I think, but if we're going to, like Bill says, hey, you can give us two, I think, you know, the box culvert isn't a bad deal. The other one seems like it might be, you know, Elizabeth's idea, might be, you know, a cheaper way to get there, but I'd like to see both, but if we're going to do anything with the box culvert, really, my whole concern here is, is, and I really, really think that we should have actually understood what's the capacity of where we're going to. We need to understand that. I mean, we've got to think the thing all the way through, and to come and say, here's a solution, and, oh, by the way, with a constant pounding of the water, obviously, we're going to create a failure down there, but that's going to be Menlo Park's problem. I didn't think that that was a problem.
And we need to look at maintenance costs, because unfortunately, I think Elizabeth's idea would have very high maintenance costs.
Yeah, so let's look at both of those. I think we look at both of those. One is, you know, it's cheaper for fixing the problem, and it kind of solves the overflow, but the box culvert, in case we ever had to widen the road, as the resident behind you asked, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Larry?
Larry.
No, Calvin.
Calvin, Calvin, because Larry's over here.
Okay.
Calvin, as Calvin mentioned, you know, we might want to have the road a little bit wider, okay, to allow for this, you know, passing.
That's a dangerous thing to mention.
Well, he was saying not to have the extra lanes.
Not extra lanes for traffic, just to create better safe space.
Why do you think a shoulder?
Shoulder.
With the life path and the pedestrian path, we're not going to have a shoulder, because it would be railed and protected.
Right.
You know, so that, you know, that.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, if we, we should look at both.
Option 2A with the boardwalk over for the bike, it's less invasive for the tree canopy, right?
Yeah, and the animals.
And the animals, and you don't have to go through the, well.
It'd provide a better mitigated SEQA alternative.
Right.
And even though there are some comments on here that says covering the channel does not give you a categorical exemption, I'm not 100% sure I agree with that.
Okay.
Only because I haven't seen why, and I haven't sat and talked to Neil Martin. And again, if the concept is because there's no pressure relief for the water for instance, well, there might be. There would be other ways of providing that, even with, you know, if you have an eighth-inch crack, a lot of eighth-inch cracks give you pretty good relief from water.
Space, we don't want cracks in our culvert.
You know what I mean, spaces between the boards.
But I gave them, I engineered the solution, there would have the overflow into the, into a swam. But if we can get both of those to look at, I think that would be good.
The idea is to bring these back to the council on the October 16 regular agenda for a recommendation to go out to bid.
Well, to go out for.
To design.
The way I understand it, we already have Big Scardozza under contract, and I probably asked them for a proposal for preliminary design, or for design.
But the alternatives that we're talking about here, the box culvert or the.
Or the open, open cast-in-place with some kind of structure on it, a boardwalk, I think is the term.
Yeah, right. Could you provide some? Could you provide some visuals for us?
Spaced, spaced boardwalk. Calvin, we have a member of the public.
Just a quick question. I mean, while your consideration of a covered boardwalk area certainly has merit, what would that northern end termination, where would it continue?
From Menlo.
Right there where it goes from two lanes to four lanes at Fair Oaks. I mean, this comes to an abrupt halt.
Well, we have to work with Menlo Park. I mean, if we were going to do a bike or pedestrian path, we're actually working with other jurisdictions right now for a master bike path. And that's one of them.
That was a meeting tomorrow.
You are.
You are. Tomorrow I'll be there too.
And so, you know, that's part of the consideration. Because a bike path along Marsh Road is of high priority, high priority.
Yep.
And it's got to go the whole length of Marsh Road to Bay, right? Or to, is that Bay?
No, we go, yeah, to Bay. And then from Bay, you know, it goes to.
It's a sidewalk.
You need way to get people out of their cars.
So what we wanted, we want to put some pressure on Menlo Park, obviously.
And make a bike lane there.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, because currently the property is a tall 12-foot sound wall. You know, pretty much all the residents from Middlefield to Bay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I may add, two comments. One, the council took actions almost a year ago in which you adopted revised grading and drainage standards in which the post-construction, should someone remodel a house or rebuild it, requires that they do, that their flow is no greater than prior to that. So we're taking steps and many of our residents are including cisterns as part of the project so that over time, there could be less water coming, flowing out of Atherton rather than more. So that's a positive step.
I have to tell you, every drop of rain that falls on my roof goes down my downspouts into a 40-foot length with a six-foot pipe under my backyard. And it's a permeable pipe. So none of my water goes out onto.
And everybody downstream wants to.
Right. And many residents are doing just that. The other thing is, I also want to remind council, you also approved a drainage master plan, which not only means, it's not only the reason why we're contacting our jurisdictions nearby, but it will also have recommendations for further actions that the council could consider taking to further reduce the amount of water. I do believe though, that the one suggestion I heard of the deep wells, I believe those have been precluded by the regional board.
Right.
So we have a member of the public and then city manager wants to.
I want to.
And you do.
Yeah, I didn't want to say something.
Why don't you go ahead first?
My comment is, I understand you say, hey, we're going to rush it two years, it's going to be here next week, okay, during two weeks. What I was asking was, is that you, I think there's two things. Number one, we haven't, you haven't looked at, and I'd like to know the price if you're going to come in two weeks and say, hey, this is what we can do with regards to covering it with a wood or that new type of wood.
T-back or backs.
Right, so, so I think you need to do some analysis on that. It's not just bringing back these two. And then the other thing is, is that I think we need to understand the capacity of what's going into Menlo Park. And so, you know, this box culvert, if we're going to continue to pursue that and have that discussion, it can't be that we're going to jam, you know, five pounds into, you know, or 10 pounds into a five-pound bag. So it's got to be tailored and you've got, you know, I don't think that that was a hard, is a hard assignment. And as I said, I think it should have been done. So I'd like to see those two answers before you come back and see us. And if you can't get it done in October, then we see it in November.
That was, that was my question. The exact information we're looking, to make sure Gordon had that. And if there was additional detail that needed to be done, getting with Big Scardozza, then it might be November before it comes back.
I think November is more reasonable.
We would have to understand.
I think November is more reasonable. Valerie, you wanted to say something? No, I'm with Eric.
I think that as part of this may be motivated by this, that soon you should have staff look at the issue of what can be done to infuse the aquifer with the water coming down before it hits this channel. But I don't think you should just look at the area along the park. That's probably the best place to get benefit. But, I mean, I know the channel's coming down near my house. It's coming all the way, you know, from Portola Valley, right? So, or Woodside. And we should look at that whole route.
And could we do something to further rupture?
Because that channel coming through West Atherton, there's plenty of places where there's probably potential infusion in there.
Okay. Perfect, great ideas. Thank you all for coming. It really, really means a lot to have more minds in discussion about this. Thank you all. Any other comments from council? Any other? Motion adjourned. Oh, did you hear that?